Well, wait a minute while Mr. Emmons makes some adjustments to his device. All right. So, good evening again to those of you who are in attendance. If you would, please take a minute to check your cell phones to make sure that you have placed them on vibrate or silence. And then, for those of you who are participating remotely, good evening to you as well. Members of the public who are participating remotely are asked to place their microphone on mute during the meeting with the exception of any public hearing. At the appropriate point in the public hearing, I will invite the public to unmute their microphone for purposes of submitting such comments as they may wish to make, one person at a time. All persons wishing to make public comments will be asked to first state their name and address for the record. And after completing the comment, members of the public will once again be asked to place their microphone on mute. And we thank all of you, whether you are participating remotely or live and here in person, for your cooperation. With that, if you would, please join us in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence in remembrance of, number one, the victims of the tragic shooting in Highland Park, Illinois, and then also St. Joseph County Correctional Officer Reema Harris, who recently was the victim of a tragic shooting in Mishawaka.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Here.
Mr. Hazen?
Here.
Mr. Mamalanti?
Here.
Mr. Benicki?
Here.
Mr. Emmons?
Here.
Excuse me, Mr. Belovich?
Here.
Mr. Compton? Mrs. Volker?
Here.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Here.
Thank you. The record will reflect that Mr. Compton is now also not participating remotely, so we can engage in some voice votes this evening in light of that fact. With that, approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of June 20, 2022. Are there any additions or corrections? Then, hearing none, the minutes will stand approved as received from the Clerk's office. Petitions, communications, remonstrance, and memorial.
Yes, Mr. President. We have petition number 2022-08 to the Honorable Members of the Mishawaka Common Council. It's a petition to rezone from C2 Shopping Center Commercial to C7 Auto-Oriented Restaurant Commercial for Speculative Outlet. Lot number one of CAT Mishawaka LLC, minor subdivision, plat. 22-06. This is signed by Mark Willhout of CAT Mishawaka LLC.
Thank you. Report of special committees. I don't believe we have any this evening, nor do we have any ordinances on first reading, so we will move into resolutions.
Resolution R. 2022-13, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, approving a petition of the Mishawaka Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 4125 Grape Road, Mishawaka, Indiana. This is a use variance to allow microblading service within multi-tenant commercial strip center, C1 District, 4125 Grape Road.
Thank you. We'll now open the public hearing on proposed resolution 2022-13. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, if you would, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Kelly Reynolds. I own Salon Studio Suites, and we are asking if we could have microblading services at our new location, at 4125 Grape Road.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Reynolds? Mr. Benicki?
Thank you. Ms. Reynolds, it just seems like we've had a bunch of different people coming in for this. How popular is that?
It's very popular. We probably, at my other location that we've closed, we probably did 15 to 20 of them a week.
Wow.
So, it's very, very, very popular.
Well, God bless you.
Well, thanks.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else physically present who wishes to speak in favor? If you would, please come forward to the podium. Then, is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak in opposition? Please come forward. And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition? Hearing none, are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then I call for the question.
Questions?
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
The resolution passes 8 to 0.
Ordinances on second reading.
Proposed ordinance number 2022-14, an ordinance amending Chapter 137 of the Municipal Code of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of 1966 of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is to rezone from I-1 Light Industrial to R-1 Single Family Residential, 1816 West Sixth Street.
Before we go further, if I may, it appears that we have someone who is participating remotely, and what it shows on our screen is "Call-In User 2", who has not muted their microphone. So, "Call-In User 2", whoever you may be, if you could mute your microphone, we would appreciate it. And with that, may we have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, your committee on land use planning, to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance number 2022-14, report that they have examined said matter, and that their opinion, it should be presented to the council as a whole. This is signed by the entire committee, and I move for its acceptance.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to receive the and approve the committee report. Any additional questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We will now move into the second reading of public hearing on proposed ordinance 2022-14. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, if you would, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
My name's Evan Forzlin, and my address is 2526 Riviera Drive in Mishawaka. And I'm the owner of the house on Sixth Street. And I bought it in March, being told that the representative of the sellers talked to the city and had no problems with getting it rezoned. And that's why I purchased the property. And my plan is to fix it up in accordance to the city code enforcement, because I met with them, and they made a long list of repairs, and I've agreed to those. And I understand there's been some issues with this vacant property. And in my opinion, any vacant property, no matter where it's located, it's going to have a lot of issues, so.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Forzlin? By the way, I knew you were coming up to the podium. I recognize you from your billboards.
Yeah.
Mr. Mamalanti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Forzlin, for attending this evening. Quick question, after you fix it up, do you intend to resell it or rent it out?
I would most likely be reselling it.
Reselling? Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Emmons?
Thank you. Just for curiosity's sake, why would you want to take a house that's zoned industrial, make it residential, when in that area between Logan Street and Ironwood, which is about a mile and a half?
Mm-hmm.
And that, and within that mile and a half, 92 of the lots are industrial, nine of them are commercial, one is R-3, and then 15 are residential. That whole area, basically, from Ironwood to Logan, is either residential, or, excuse me, industrial or commercial.
Yeah.
Why do you think somebody would want to buy a house in that area when they're right next door to an industrial facility with no property, basically, for a yard and that?
Yeah. There, I see that neighborhood is not just one street, I see it as all the streets surrounding it. And it's predominantly a residential neighborhood. So, there's a lot of people that live over there. There's a, there's plenty of residential houses on the south side of Sixth Street. And I think all of them are, well, not all of them, probably the majority of them are residential. So, there's a, there has a, it has a decent yard, actually, on the backside, and it's fenced in. So, there's...
On the east and west, and in the front, it's not too much land.
No, no, it's not too big.
Well, the reason I'm saying that is, I grew up on Sixth Street.
Yeah.
I grew up on the corner of Berlin and Sixth.
Mm-hmm.
And that was all residential. There was only five commercial buildings at that time, or industrial buildings.
Gotcha.
Back there in the 60s, 50s and 60s.
Mm-hmm.
Until the council changed it and made, made the lot right across from our family home.
Yeah.
Made it commercial, then it all went downhill.
Yeah.
And I don't see it revibrating back into a residential area when you see what's there already.
Yeah.
You've got, you know, two facilities that were gas and oil.
Yeah.
You have one, it's a warehouse, you have, you know, you've just got commercial and, and industrial. And I don't see it revibrating back to residential. Even though across the street, there are some that is residential, but there are some commercial buildings too also on...
Yeah.
On Sixth Street.
Yeah.
And that, and it's a, it's an old neighborhood. I grant you that, because like I say, I grew up in that area.
Yeah.
And I know how it's turned over.
Yeah.
And that, and it's not turning over for families.
Mm-hmm.
And that, and so, I personally is not in favor of rezoning it, and spot zoning it.
Mm-hmm.
That's what happened, that's why it became industrial and commercial, because of spot zoning way back in the 60s. And right now, we're doing the same thing. We're taking a lot that's industrial and trying to stick a residential right in the middle of it. And so, therefore, I'm not in favor of spot zoning, and I will not be supporting this.
Okay. Now, there's, the house just to the west, I believe that's a residential home, so it's not completely covered?
No, I'm saying there's 15 homes in that area, in that. But that stretches from Logan Street all the way to Ironwood.
Yeah.
And that, and I say, I drove that area, I counted it, I went to the planning commission, I got the information.
Mm-hmm.
And that, so unless they're wrong, then I'm wrong. But I'm assuming they're, they're right in their information, that's on the sheet.
Okay.
But thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Mrs. Volker?
Thank you. Hi, Evan.
Hello.
Appreciate you taking the time with me the other day to take a tour of the house. I have a question about the house next door.
Okay.
Is that zoned commercial, I'm sorry, zoned industrial?
I don't know what it's zoned.
If it's blue, yes.
So, the other thing that I understand is that your house is on the property line, and then the commercial building next to you is on a property line, and there's an easement that goes between the two buildings. Is that correct?
I'm not, I'm not familiar with an easement on that side of the property.
Okay.
I just, my assumption was the property line was down the middle, or close to down the middle, to that side of it. But if there's an easement, there's an easement.
Okay. That's all for now, thank you.
All right.
Thank you. For the record, in the staff report, if you're referring to the yellow house that's to the west, it does indicate that that's zoned I-1 Industrial.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mamalanti?
Thank you again, Mr. Hicksonbaugh. Quick question, you had mentioned that you had agreed to a long list of items that the city had requested.
Mm-hmm.
Without going into too, too much detail, what do you have in mind to upgrade the home, so to speak? What improvements do you plan to, to make?
Yeah. So, pretty much redoing the whole inside of the house. Redoing the bathrooms, redoing the kitchen. I'm either painting the siding or installing new siding. And just, I've done a few of these, so I just, I clean up as much as I can, I fix everything that I see fixed, so. Yeah, everything's going to be nice and new and moving ready.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Other questions? And I have a couple, Mr. Forzlin. Again, thanks for being here.
Yep.
Other than seeing you on your billboards, I think the last time I saw you, you probably had a caveman baseball uniform on around Baker Park.
Yeah.
Um, I want to go back to one of the earlier statements that you made with respect to your conversation, what a representative of the former owner, who, if I understood you correctly, indicated to you that the city had no problem with your purchase and plans. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I probably should have got something in writing, or it was just a phone conversation.
Yeah.
So...
In hindsight, it's always 2020, but I would suspect that a direct conversation between you and someone would have been more...
Yeah.
Efficient, but that's just the way life works sometimes.
Yeah.
So, in the follow-up to that conversation, and I want to piggyback on Mr. Mamalanti's question a little bit. It sounds like you have made some investment and done some work on the house, on the interior, correct?
I started doing some clean-out of the house.
Okay. Has any of that work been done with the anticipation that the house would be more suitable to rental rather than single-family occupancy by an owner?
There, all I've done is just removed the things that needed to be removed before the remodel. So, there's nothing been done in regard to fixing the property yet, so.
And I guess that just based upon the size of this home, that it may or may not, I would think it's less likely that it would be amenable to be in subdivided and, you know, have multiple apartments, if you will, inside anyways. Is that the way that's laid out?
Yeah, it would be tough to do that.
Okay. So, when you talk about your plans for the future, I want to make sure that I understand. If this is approved this evening, what's the next step look like for you with regard to that home?
Okay. There's, I'm working on a couple other projects right now, and this one would be the next in line. And it would probably be done by October or so. And I'd most likely be selling it before the end of the year.
Okay. And I'll rely on your expertise as a Realtor more than anything else when I ask this question.
Yeah.
So, as you think about finishing up that work and placing it on the market, do you think it's more likely that that's going to be attractive to an owner who wants to occupy the home? Or is it going to be more attractive to either a landlord who wants to rent it out?
Yeah. Due to the price point that it will be in, it probably won't be very desirable for an investor. The profit margins wouldn't be there, so it would most likely be a primary resident.
And if you're not comfortable sharing in a public setting what that price point would be, I certainly would respect that.
Yeah.
But can you be a little bit more definitive of what you, if you were done with the work and you were going to place it on the market today, what do you think you'd list it at?
There's, I actually just am selling another house I'll ride on the railroad tracks on Baker. And that one's selling for $170, and we're actually closing on it tomorrow. And I'm thinking this one will be around $150 to $160.
Okay.
Be worth that.
And it seems like during the time that you're over there with regard to the house to the west that Mrs. Volker referred to,
Mm-hmm.
Do you agree that it appears to be occupied as a residence and is used as a residence?
It's what it looks like.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, with regard to, and I know you don't have it in front of you, but with the pictures that are attached to the staff report or incorporated therein, there's a big black truck sitting in the front yard.
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, is that your truck or somebody who's working on it?
That was my truck.
All right. So, if in fact this was approved, the big black truck isn't going to be a permanent fixture parked in the front yard, correct?
No, nope. That was one of the days that we were cleaning out the house, so I don't, it won't be parked like that.
Okay. I'm going to ask you a crazy lawyer hypothetical question, all right?
Okay.
So, if in fact we were to approve this, but make it conditioned upon your commitment to us in writing,
Okay.
that it's in your, it's your intent to sell this to an owner who's going to occupy rather than to use it as a rental? And quite, I'll be honest, our legal counsel was unable to attend tonight, so I'd have to consult with him.
Yeah.
But buy into my hypothetical for a moment.
Yeah.
Would you be willing to commit to a sale to someone who had the intent to use it other than as a rental property?
I would have to check into the discrimination laws to make sure it's nothing unethical that I'm doing. So, you, as when you're selling a house, you can't discriminate against...
No, I'm well aware of that, but I'm telling you that under Indiana law, and I could cite you the statute, but we have the ability to be able to place conditions on rezoning, so...
Yeah, I would be...
Assume for the sake of this argument that it is legally permissible, and again, there's some research that we would have to do, and I'm speaking only for myself, not for anybody else.
Yeah.
But assuming that it's legal both from your analysis and ours, would you be willing to commit to that?
Yeah.
Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Benicki?
Thank you. Mr. Forzlin, looking at this, it says the city's comprehensive plan calls for industrial because of the proximity to the tracks. I mean, how does, how does that affect your, your ability to sell this? I mean, the city has, the city has this big plan, and it's supposed to stay in industrial. So, what do you think about that?
Um, in regards to the tracks, I don't think that's too, it is a little bit of a negative being up against the tracks, but there's several houses along all of Mishawaka that's along the tracks that are residential. So, yeah, I don't see the tracks being that negative.
I mean, but, but the comprehensive plan, so obviously, there's a plan to, you know, if we're going to go neighborhood by neighborhood by neighborhood, the plan says we want to keep this industrial.
Yeah.
And now you're asking to change that. So, if we change this now, you know, that could start, you know, other people kind of spot, like Mr. Emmens said.
Yeah.
Spot zoning, and then, you know, somebody wanted to come in and do something a little bit bigger, it could affect that.
Yeah. Yep, I'm not trying to ruin anyone's plans for the city, so...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mrs. DeMaye?
Thank you, Mr. President. Hi. The building to the east of it, is that the old Piper's? The garage?
It might be, yeah.
Does anybody, no, it is the old Piper's. Is it, where, is there anything going on in that now? Or is it shut down?
Running out of it.
There is a business.
Yeah.
Okay, do you know if it's, it's not owned by Mr. Piper?
I don't believe so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Forzlin? I thought of one more hypothetical I'm going to lay on you.
Okay.
So, bear with me.
Okay.
So, I talked about a couple of questions premised upon what would happen if this was approved. Let's look at it in the opposite light. What would your next step be if it was the pleasure of the council not to approve the rezoning request? What do you think you'd do?
Um, it's hard saying. It's, I don't necessarily have to sell it right away.
True.
If there's, I'm not, I don't make any rash decisions on anything I do, so I'd take a while to figure out what the best plan of action is for it, so.
That's a fair answer, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Forzlin? Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Is there anyone else physically present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If you would, please come forward to the podium. Then, is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If you would, please unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record. Hearing no one, is there anyone physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? If so, please come forward. I saw you get the elbow there, so I figured you were on your way. Yeah. I understand.
Jason Van Zandt, 1802 West Sixth Street. Long story short, we don't want to see the spot rezoning. We are looking at a situation where we are going to be expanding our business in the next year to possibly two years. We are going to need more property to continue to move forward with what we're doing. Unfortunately, that house should have never been sold the way that it was. I feel bad for Mr. Forzlin that it happened. We would have gladly bought it at the time. I can't change what's already been done, but we are going to need a larger facility. We're going to be adding more employees, and we definitely would rather have anything in between us and the next-door neighbor. Ultimately, that house is so close to the property lines that the water runs off the roof and hits the side of our building. That house also has been a blight to the community for a lot of years. It was used as an office building for several construction companies, and also as a partial office building for the original owners of the business that I currently own. I really think that it ought to be left industrial. I would also like to know, if you guys could tell me, how many of the houses in that community are rentals? The way I look at it, I don't think we need any more rentals there. We need more industrial property.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the council? Mr. Mamalanti?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Pardon my ignorance on the timeline, but I'm guessing that house was already purchased when you purchased your, your building?
Vice versa.
Vice versa.
We had a signed contract, and she ripped it up.
To purchase the home?
Yes.
Okay.
We were going to buy the whole thing.
Okay.
Again, nothing against Mr. Forzlin.
Sure.
It's not his fault that we're in this position, but it really needs to stay the way that it is.
And since this is the evening of hypotheticals, I wouldn't mind jumping on that wagon. But if this did not get approved this evening, and Mr. Forzlin ended up putting it up for sale, would that be of interest?
It would be. 100%.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other questions? And sir, let me follow up with a couple. Thank you for your comments, I appreciate it.
Yes.
Um, but I want to make sure that I fully understand what you've shared with us, so...
Yes, yes.
Um, you know, the water problem, I heard that, and it sounds like that would be a problem until there was a remedy made to, another fix came into the mix, whether it was a residence or whether it was continued to be used as an industrial property. Would you agree with that?
Or taken down and turned into a parking lot.
Or taken down and turned into a parking lot, which may or may not be your plan, but you have to own it first, right? I guess what I struggle with a little bit, and this is just my, maybe it's my particular hangup.
Oh, yeah.
Is that it is more typical for people to come to us and ask for industrial property to be zoned to residential since, by and large, people would view that as a less intensive use, less, more of a potential problem to the value of their homes, those kind of things. So, this is, in 17 years of doing this, the first time I remember a similar situation, but it's an unusual circumstance as well, I'll grant you that, so...
It should have never happened.
Um, I, I think we all agree that, but though, what happened is beyond our control, and...
Oh, yes, 100%.
We can't rewrite history at this point in time, right? Unfortunately. So, there is, and I promise you that I'm not going to bore you by reading through all of them, there are 71 industrial uses that could be made of that home. And I'll grant you that, of those 71, many of them would be impossible, even if somebody wanted to do it, just given the size of the lot and the structure and what have you. But, so, any industrial use that would come in, it sounds like would be preferable to you than a single family living next door to you in that home. Is that accurate?
Absolutely. Would you be comfortable having a family living next to a commercial building?
You know, the beauty of sitting up here is that I get to ask the questions and not answer them, so... Um, so, I'm going to take that as a rhetorical question and move on with my questions. And my question still stands, would you be okay, and I'm just trying to understand, so... So, you would be okay with any industrial use there, whether you owned it or not, as, but a residential home is just something that you're not interested having next door to the building that you own?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions for this gentleman, Mr. Benicki?
Yes, thank you. Have you reached out to Mr. Forzlin and had conversations?
We've talked.
So, I mean, is, is it something that, if this were continued, that within the next 30 days or so, something might be able to be negotiated? Or is this something that is so far apart that it really doesn't matter?
It's pretty far apart right now.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else physically present who wishes to speak in opposition? If you would, please come forward to the podium. All right. Then, is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition? Okay, we can wait.
They want to know if you want to speak against the property.
I'll tell you what, if, if he changes his mind, give me the high sign and, uh, you can, okay. Sir, if you want to come forward and speak, you're welcome to. If you change your mind, way that mean you can come forward and share your thoughts with us. Can you hear me okay? Can you hear me?
I, I can't understand what you're saying.
Well.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, that's okay.
The only thing that I will say is, I put up with John for better than five years. This man came in there, told me what he was gonna do, and he did it. And he did it all, gone, find job. They keep the cars off the streets. He wants to expand, and his hands are tied.
Sir, just for the record, can you share with us your name and address? Your name and address?
Just write it. Just write it down.
Can you tell us your name and address so that she can put it in the minutes?
I can't understand. Sorry.
Now you gotta try to read my handwriting, too.
Good luck for the lawyer.
Can you, can you help him?
My, my name is Jack Nyber.
Okay. What's your address?
1809 West Sixth Street.
Okay. Then I'm gonna stand here with you, Mr. Nyber, and see if any of my colleagues have any questions for you, and I'll try to help repeat them if I can. Any questions for Mr. Nyber? All right, thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? If so, please come forward. Seeing no one, are there any council members who wish to speak? No, um, I will tell you from my standpoint, I, I think some legitimate points have been raised. I'm still intrigued by the possibility of some further research to see if there is an additional condition that could be entered into by agreement of the parties, particularly Mr. Forsland, that if this is gonna be approved, will limit it to, uh, single-family, um, occupancy as well. He'll have to do his research, we'll have to do our research, but, um, I for one would be interested in a postponement until our next regularly scheduled council meeting would allow, which would allow for that to occur. So, Mr. Evans?
I'll second, uh, Mr. Hickson Ball.
Well, you're gonna have to make the motion since I can't do it.
I'll make the motion that we second, or that we postpone, uh, Resolution 2022-14.
And I'll second it.
To the next, uh.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to postpone, um, further action on Proposed Ordinance Number 2022-14 until our next regularly scheduled council meeting in July. Any additional questions or comments from the council? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oh, I'm sorry.
I did have a, a comment, or. Um, I'm so sorry, Mr. Business Owner. I'm so sorry, I've forgotten your name, Jason. I want to thank you for taking the time to show, talk to me a little bit about, um, your business and, and your plans. And I guess I would also throw out that while we do our research as a council about what stipulations, um, we may or may not be able to put into our, um, approval, should we approve, I would also suggest that the two property owners maybe talk a little bit more and see if there's some way you could come up to an agreement between the two of you. Thank you.
And I would echo those comments, Mrs. Volker. I think that would be better for all involved, that there could be a meeting of the minds and some type of resolution. But barring that, uh, then a motion has been, and thank you for your comments. A motion has been made and seconded to postpone the public hearing on Proposed Ordinance 2022-14 until our next regularly scheduled council meeting. Any additional questions or comments from the council? Hearing none. Then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter will be postponed until our next regularly scheduled council meeting. Which is July twenty-fifth, and hopefully there will be some good conversation that can take place between now and then, but thank you.
Proposed Ordinance Number 2022-15 and Ordinance Amending Chapter 137 of the Municipal Code of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of nineteen sixty-six of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is to rezone from C1 to... Please, please mute your microphone, whoever is not muted. Rezone from C1 to R2 to repurpose a salon and residential unit for a two-family residential, two units at 1023 West Sixth Street.
Thank you. And once again, before we move forward, we will ask call-in user three to mute their microphone so that we can proceed with the meeting. So someone who is on a cell phone or an iPad that does not bear their name, your microphone is unmuted, and we would appreciate it if you would mute it. Thank you, sir or madam. With that, may we have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the common council of the City of Mishawaka, your committee on land use planning, to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance Number 2022-15, report today have examined said matter and that, in their opinion, should be presented to the council as a whole, and this was signed by the entire committee, and I move for its acceptance.
Second.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. Any additional questions or comments from the council? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? With that, we will move into second reading of public hearing on Proposed Ordinance 2022-15. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, if you would, please come forward to the podium. Seeing no one, is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak with regard to 1023 West Sixth Street? Um, if you could turn, can you boost your volume a little bit, Mr. Young?
Yeah, so that's as loud as I can go.
That's much better, thank you, sir.
Yeah.
And could you add, uh, thank you for your participation, could you add your address for the record?
Yeah, I'm the owner of 1023 West Sixth Street. Sorry, I couldn't attend in person, so I, I wasn't sure of the procedure. So I just want to make sure you guys knew I was on the, on the, uh, line, if you, if there are any questions you needed to answer. I was just testing the, the audio, 'cause I was trying to stay muted and.
You did a good job, and we appreciate your patience with the technology. If you would, could you share a little bit more about your plans for the property, and then I'll throw the floor open to questions from the council.
Yeah, I've owned the property since nineteen ninety-three, um, and my mom has occupied the property. She's now seventy-six. She's retired from, uh, the beauty shop business. Covid pretty much took whatever wind was left in her sails. Uh, and, uh, I just removed all the beauty shop equipment, gonna use that as a space for me or family when we come in town, uh, to stay. So, uh, I think it makes sense for, from a resale standpoint, whenever she, you know, rides off into the sunset or wants to do something different, she'd be able to, I think, more easily sell the property. Uh, and really just to, to replicate what it truly is operating as, it's no longer a beauty shop, it's just gonna be a residential property.
All right, thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Young? Mrs. Volker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Off the top of my head, Mr. Young, um, and thanks for coming before us, off the top of my head, why not zone at R1?
Uh, that was my intent. I didn't even know R2 existed, and as I was going through this process and filling out all the paperwork, there were some folks at the council that suggested to do R2, and there are two kitchens. So I was pretty open to either way or whatever makes the most sense. You know, that's, I've got family there, I'm always gonna be there and stay there. I, I have a daughter in college at Indiana State, so, uh, and my mom has a lot of years ahead of her. She, she occupies the legacy house part of the property, and then the, uh, the old beauty shop portion is gonna just be a one-bedroom apartment in a sense. Uh, but there is a wall between them with a door that was an old separation. There are three entrances to the property, so I'm open to whatever makes the most sense.
Can I, can I ask a follow-up question?
Yeah.
Do you know if the house next door is a rental or, um, owner occupied?
So, um, are you talking about on Sixth Street or Cleveland Street?
Well, I'm, I think must be on Sixth Street. I know this house is so interesting, it's like, what is it, when you have like business on the front side and party in the back? The way.
My mom's partying days are long over.
But it's just so interesting, 'cause it's obviously a business on Sixth Street, but when you go around the corner.
Yeah.
Looks very residential.
Yeah, and really.
Maybe tell me both on Sixth Street and then around the corner, how are they both zoned? Or are they single-family occupied?
There are single-family occupied homes, uh, I would want to say, since my mom has lived there since nineteen ninety-three, maybe the house, the borders around Sixth Street has changed hands one time, but I don't know if that was sold or if it was a new tenant. And then, uh, there's the alley on Cleveland Street, and then across from the alley is a home that I believe that family has moved out, and I don't recall if that was sold or if it was rented and re-rented to someone else. But it's all single-family homes.
Right. Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Volker. And, uh, again, for the record, the staff report does confirm that the properties to the north, south, east and west are all zoned, R1, single-family.
Thank you, sorry about that.
It's okay. Mr. Mamalanti?
Thank you, Mr. Hickson Ball. Not a question for Mr. Young, but more of a comment, just, uh, trip down memory lane, I remember walking my grandmother a few blocks down to get her hair done, uh, several, several years ago at your location, so. Just wanted to, uh, add that personal touch to you, and thank you for, uh, maintaining that property.
No, it was a, it was a great run. My mom, my mom should write a book about, about that property. It was something else, but.
I'm sure she couldn't understand my grandma, so that won't be a help, but, uh, she enjoyed it.
All right, well, good. Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Young? Then thank you, sir. If you would, please, uh, mute your microphone once again, but we appreciate your time.
All right, thanks.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If so, please come forward or unmute your microphone, as the case may be. Then is there anyone in the council chambers this evening who wishes to speak in opposition? And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition? Are there any council members who wish to speak? Hearing none, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaide?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hickson Ball?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes eight-two-zero. Proposed ordinance Number 2022-16 and ordinance amending Chapter 137 of the Municipal Code of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of nineteen sixty-six of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is a PUD amendment to allow indoor climate-controlled self-storage facility as a permitted use in an existing building at 1435 University Drive Court.
Thank you. May we have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the common council of the City of Mishawaka, your committee on land use planning, to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance Number 2022-16, report that have examined said matter, and that their opinion, it should be adopted. This is signed by the entire committee, and I move for its acceptance.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. Any additional questions or comments from the council? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We will now open, we will now move into second reading of public hearing on Proposed Ordinance 2022-16. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, if you would, please come forward, or I suspect that we have somebody who is going to unmute their microphone and begin by stating their name and address for the record.
I have a good assumption. My name is Ross Claiborne. I work for Verdade Real Estate. My address is thirty-seven oh-eight Nashville Avenue, New Orleans, Louisiana. And as the PUD amendment suggests, my company, we are looking at redeveloping this indoor soccer facility into a climate-controlled self-storage facility. Um, I believe everyone in planning staff who we've spoken with has given us their feedback and have received our intentions positively. We just have to get this PUD amendment, so we are allowed to do it by right.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any questions, Mr. Claiborne, from the council? Then thank you, sir. If you would, please, uh, mute your microphone once again. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If you would, please come forward or unmute your microphone. And is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? Please come forward. Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition? Thank you. Are there any council members who wish to speak? Hearing none, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaide?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hickson Ball?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes eight-two-zero.
Thank you, and welcome to the community, Mr. Claiborne.
Thank you for your consideration. We look forward to opening for business. Have a good evening, gentlemen and ladies of the council.
Thank you, you too, sir.
Thank you.
Proposed ordinance Number 2022-17 and ordinance amending Chapter 137 of the Municipal Code of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of nineteen sixty-six of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is to rezone from I1 and I2 to C3 City Center Commercial to match adjacent zoning and permit and future C3 uses, vacant lots in Mills, Hill Street between Front Street and First Street.
Thank you, ma'am. We have the committee report, please.
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the common council of the City of Mishawaka, your committee on land use planning, to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance 2022-17, report that they have examined said matter, and it, in their opinion, should be adopted. This is signed by the entire committee, and I move for its acceptance.
Second.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With that, we will move into second reading of public hearing on Proposed Ordinance 2022-17. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward. Good evening, Mr. Prince.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. Ken Prince, tonight, wearing my Board of Public Works hat, um, as the owner of the property, or at least the majority of the property. So the property on the east side, um, of Hill Street is owned by the Calais Partnership, and we have a development agreement that's signed, that they're going forward with on the mixed-use, uh, development of apartments and commercial properties, um, below. And then on the west side, there were a few homes and a parking lot. These are all residual lots that are left over from the Unoral days. So, uh, zoned heavy industrial and light industrial respectively. All we're trying to do is to match the C3 city center zoning, which surrounds all of these parcels. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Prince? Mr. Prince, just for the record, with Riordan Calais Partnership, obviously they're aware of this and have expressed no objections, um, particularly.
They're very happy to let us carry some water for them, yes.
I suspect it as much.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Prince? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? If you would, please come forward to the podium. Is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak in opposition? Please come forward. And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition? Thank you. Are there any council members who wish to speak? Hearing none, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaide?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hickson Ball?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes eight-two-zero. Proposed ordinance Number 2022-18 and ordinance amending Chapter 137 of the Municipal Code of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of nineteen sixty-six of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is to rezone from C1 to R2 to repurpose a salon and residential unit for a two-family residential, two units at 1023 West Sixth Street. This is to rezone from C-one and C-seven to R-three multifamily residential to convert existing hotel into multifamily apartment building and construct an addition, in addition. It's at two-seven-five-four Lincoln Way East.
Thank you. Ma'am, we have the committee report, please.
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the common council of the city of Mishawaka, your committee on land use planning, to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance number twenty-two-two dash eighteen, report that they have examined said matter and that their, in their opinion, should be presented to the council as a whole. This is signed by the entire committee, and I move for its acceptance.
Second. Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We will now move into second reading of public hearing on proposed ordinance twenty-two-two dash eighteen. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? If you would, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for
John Pericini with Coldwell Banker Commercial Office, address six-three-three Windy Cove Court, Mishawaka. Uh, Mike Huber's here with me from Evan Marsh. He's gonna come up and get into a little bit of the details. I just wanted to get in a little bit of the history of the site. As we all know, this has been kind of a challenging site in the city. It's been on the market many years. It's time. We've had it under contract numerous times, but the cost of rehab was too much. People wanted to keep it as a hotel, it just didn't kinda make sense. Uh, we had a chance to brand it, they walked away. So, this, I think, is a great opportunity. Uh, we got the Dunkin' Donuts, it came in, you can see that's getting improved, sidewalks, driveways, it looks pretty nice over there, landscaping up the hill. So, what I wanted to do is bring, some of you, I think, have had this, I kinda worked closely with Tony and, and have talked to Matt, cause you guys, they have the neighborhood meetings, and Greg, just kinda get a Phil and Woody from the Plan Commission, kinda give them, keep giving them updates on how it's going. Um, this is gonna be like a two-phase project, uh, rehab the old building and then put a new building up along the river. Um, I mean, I commend Mr. Davidson for taking this on, it's a tough project, but, you know, there's a lot of demand, and I think with interest rates rising, you're gonna see this apartment demand maintain because of it. Um, I wanna give you a copy of this to everyone. This is the renderings that, um, show you kinda how the landscape lays out, some of you might have that. I don't wanna leave Ken Prince out, he's been talking about it constantly, so, uh, trying to work this through, make the city happy, uh, working on the numbers, uh, not gonna take a look at tax abatement, but we gotta work on the numbers more specifically in my conversations with Ken. So, what he's done now, he's gone, he spent a lot of money on engineering, those architectural renderings, some of that, the facade and some of the basic things, but now he's bringing on a real detailed architect, start hammering out real true numbers. The first building is gonna have about sixty units in it, give or take, second building about forty, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, and, um, you know, the second building might have a little more two- and three-bedroom. So, we're, the parking's a little tight, but we've been working on that and, uh, and trying to make that area look a lot nicer. Now, I, most of us drive by that ten times a day, whether we need to or not, so it'd be a nice improvement. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Pericini? Mr. Benicki?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pericini. In the current condition it's in, we still have residents living in there.
Right.
Is there, is there any talks on what happens to them folks?
Yeah, we've been discussing that. It's, you know, there's about, I think about thirty percent occupied, so, then people have been in there a long time, so, we've already can talk to him about, you know, giving them an opportunity, because they are paying, you know, they're paying a daily rate there. So, when this is done, it's probably gonna be similar to a monthly rate in, in the, in the rehab place. So, uh, yeah, that's, nobody's gonna just kick them out, and, you know, it just doesn't make sense, cause there's some income being generated there, so, he can take advantage. I think the little difference is, you know, there's a lot of pets and things like that, and I don't know what, what route he's gonna take in that.
Well, what I'm talking about is, you know, the folks that are in there now during the renovations and things, even though they would have an opportunity after the fact, what, what do we do with them in, in the interim?
Well, there's, the building is almost split up in sections, like, three floors, split in half, so, it's taking a hard look at where, where we can shift people and start, cause they're kinda scattered through there. There's plenty of space to move people in, so, I think that's gonna be an early phase of discussion, once we get to that point, and give them an opportunity to stay in certain areas, and then, it'd be easily to rehab this section at a time, which would probably make more sense. That's what he's taking a look at.
So, I, it, it's not that they're just going to empty the building, so to speak?
No, not, right now, that's not the plan.
That's not-
Cause he knows that they don't wanna displace these people, you know, till, unless they don't wanna stay there, you know? And if somebody's in there with, you know, two dogs and two cats, that, that might not work, you know? So, you got one bed, you know, you got one bedroom apart, apart, well, hotel rooms, gets a little crowded with all the animals.
I've had conversations with one lady, has been there for over twelve years.
Right. Those people, those people, he's gonna, he's gonna wanna keep, you know? You just kinda try to time that thing out, you know?
Okay.
And it's set up a way that you can, you know, do the rehab, the way that building is lined up, you know, it's, it, it would be not very difficult to start in one section, move people to the other section, and keep working through that.
Okay, and then also, you did mention the parking. I mean, the first building looks to have all the parking, and the second building not, not so much.
Well, we're, we're, we're in the requirements right now, right? We may, we're, we're gonna try to find a way, either we're gonna have to, you know, we'd like to get as many units as possible, cause of the cost, but we're gonna try to find a way to get more parking, if we can, whether it's two here, three there, so, right now, we're okay, but, you know, we're still in the planning stages, you know, it's not specifically designed.
Okay. Do you know if this is on a bus route at all?
Uh, I think so, right there.
So, I'd be-
Yeah.
People could be, you know, using buses, bikes, whatever.
I think it's right there on, is it? Yeah, it's right there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Volker?
Mrs. Volker?
Hi, and, John, you may not be the, hi, how are you?
Yeah, good, thank you.
You might not be the right one, um, for my questions. Um, I'm paying more attention to the interior of the building, and, um, just reading the, uh, staff report about the sizes of these apartments, sixty-studio apartments at two-hundred-and-seventy square feet-
Mm-hmm.
And then, one-to-two bedrooms between five-hundred-and-forty and eight-hundred-and-ten square feet. Those feel super small to me.
Well, this building, if you remember the Holiday Inn, they were, it's black-
All right.
Yeah, sections. So, you're a little limited what you can do in the original building, because of that. You can open up, cause there are some two units in there, you know, where there's adjoining rooms, I should say, but it's a little difficult because of that. It's structurally solid, but the way, you know, those units are just, you know, poured blocks and stacked on top of each other is basically what it is. So, uh, it is, but, um, no, he's, there'll be full kitchens and all that kinda stuff in them, so, I imagine the efficiencies are gonna be kinda tight.
Um, and then, so, the follow-up question to that would be, what is, uh, what is the price or the, the rental rate for these, um, apartments now, and what do you anticipate that they will be?
Uh-
And are they gonna be market rate? Is it gonna be-
They're definitely market rate. It's kinda sorting out, you know, eight-hundred to twelve-hundred, just depends what kinda cost he's got in them, you know, the initial is, per month, you know, so that's, but he hasn't got it specifically yet, because we're still in that cost phase, but they are definitely market rate, that's for sure.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mamalanti?
Yes, thank you. Mr. President, thank you, Mr. Pericini, uh, for the information tonight, and also for the information you can have kept, uh, some of us, uh, up to speed and in the loop with the, uh, potential development. Um, you know, I get to page two, and I just say, how, how quickly can I vote yes? You know, you drive by it-
Does look a lot better.
You drive by it ten or twelve times a day, you know, you, you kinda-
You don't see it anymore.
Yeah, right. So, I, I really love the concept, and I know Mr. Davidson does have quite a bit of things on his plate currently, just a realistic timeline, how are we looking here?
Mike?
I, I think in our conversations, sorry, Mike Huber, Evan Marsh Consultants, three-fifteen West Jefferson Boulevard, Davenport, Indiana. In our conversations with Mr. Davidson so far, I think he's anticipating, uh, if, if everything gets approved and stays on the schedule, that he would probably be starting, um, construction on this building in, um, early twenty-twenty-three, I think was right, and then finishing that up kind of by early twenty-twenty-four, and then by fall or later twenty-twenty-four, starting on the second building would be the second phase, and then completing that up by the third or fourth quarter of twenty-twenty-five. So, um, that's the timeline that he's kinda thinking about right now.
And financing has already been approved, and all that-
That's, my understanding is the financing's not an issue here.
Okay.
So-
Thank you.
Mr. Belovich?
Thank you, Mr. President. John, what, uh, what are the current rates that are being paid right now? Are there, are there different rates for single and?
Um, I, it's like twenty or thirty bucks a day, I think, twenty-five, thirty dollars, is what I think they're paying.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hazen?
I, I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Pericini. I talked to him three years ago. This location has been a problem for thirty years. When I was on the police department, it was a problem, so I'm hoping this goes through. I know that he's talked to probably five or six people, they always fell through, it sounds like we got somebody that-
Right.
Is really interested in doing it, and I think he's got the financing to do it, so I'll be supporting it. And, and this is one location that I hear from, as you know, in our area, a lot, that people want something done with it, so, I appreciate the way you did, you kinda kept the river, that people can enjoy the river too, we talked about that, and you moved Dunkin' Donuts up to the front towards Lincoln Way to make sure we could get a building back there, it worked out good. Happy with you.
Thank you.
Mr. Benicki?
Thank you. Mr. Huber, uh, with the, the building right against the river, is there any problems with building such a big building that close to the river with foundations, things like that?
Uh, not that, not in our experience. Obviously, we're gonna have to be, um, up out of the floodplain anyway, so they'll take all of the, uh, necessary structural foundation, uh, things that they need to make sure they do, just, uh, to get that in and get that right. So, I'm not a structural engineer, I'm a planner, but my understanding is we shouldn't have any issues there.
Okay, and then, in the future, we love our river walks, is there room if the city ever wanted to put a river walk behind there?
Yeah, so I, I think you can see there's am, amenable wa, walking paths already kinda within the design, so I don't see why, I mean, we talked to Mr. Davidson, but I see why there wouldn't be some opportunities to maybe have some public access back there.
Yeah, I mean, we just, especially with the, the dam being right there, and the fishing is great.
We are planning sidewalks along the front to connect to the Dunkin' Donuts sidewalks that go in, and make sure we connect around to the Capitol Avenue sidewalks as well, so we're trying to play into some of the connectivity already, so.
Okay, and then, uh, last question is, you know, when, when we start getting that many people in that area, and it's so close to that light at Capitol, how do we handle all that traffic in and out?
So, we had a conversation with NDOT already about that, in fact, after, after the last Plan Commission meeting, NDOT called us, because we did the design for the extended, um, and the, the traffic, uh, turn lane, uh, that, that was created to allow Dunkin' Donuts to go in. Um, we recognized, this is a hundred and six units or so, the hotel's a ninety-room hotel, so, I mean, we're not increasing the density significantly between, if it were an operating ninety-room hotel. So, uh, yeah, after we had our conversations with, um, NDOT, uh, we explained to them, we, we re-reviewed the plan that we, we gave them for Dunkin', and, uh, they didn't have any additional concerns at this time, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions?
Um, a couple, and I will defer to you gentlemen to decide who wants to answer them. Um, you, you, the first is a follow-up on, and it may be too early to answer this question, but, once the, uh, buildings are fully constructed and at least phase one starts to have more residency, will there be an onsite property manager there to address any concerns that residents or neighbors have, or do we know, do we not know at this point in time how it's gonna be structured once it's operated?
That's been my understanding, just, um, I think at least one, if not a couple, property maintenance people will be there.
That's the plan, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Um, and it sounds like the, from what you just indicated, to piggyback on Mr. Benicki's question, that the work that has already been done in conjunctions with the Dunkin' Donuts development really set the stage for there to be a better traffic pa, plan that will service this site if it's approved as well.
That's correct, and I think if you saw Engineering's comments in the staff report, they said just verify that the turn lane that we're installing for this, uh, for the Dunkin' Donuts is long enough, and then, if our conversations with NDOT, they didn't have any additional pushback or ask us to do any additional lengthening of that turn lane, so.
We were actually, when that other hotel was, um, under contract, and they didn't finish out, but we coordinated both of those contracts for that access point. Each of them were, you know, had a responsibility to meet NDOT's requirement, so, that was kinda fortunate, well, unfortunate they left, but fortunate that work was already done. It is a tough, it's a tough spot. The traffic light, um, I think this, NDOT has improved, it's a little, I do about, uh, a daily McDonald's tee over there, so, it is a little easier to get out than it used to be. Now, five o'clock or seven in the morning, a little bit different, but it's, it, it controls the traffic a lot better than it used to out there.
And then, to follow up on, uh, one of the answers that you gave, Mr. Pericini, to Mrs. Volker's question, um, when you talk about the, the apartments being market rate, um, the most common question that we have posed to this is, will this be Section Eight housing? Now, we understand what it means when you say market rate, but can you address this? Will this, in fact, this will not be Section Eight housing-
Right.
-or government subsidized housing in any way?
There's technically not Section Eight anymore, it's tax credit, and it's a very complicated process. There's two type of tax credit, one of them, you go through a bidding process, and, um, and you get less, you get more credits, and the other one, you don't, it's a little less credits, but it's a lengthy drawn-out process, and we had, he had no interest in doing that, you know, so-
All right.
No reason, just felt that this would be a market rate spot, you know.
Well, then, at least no more questions for me, but to echo Mr. Mammelani and Mr. Hazen's comments, this has been a property that has needed some tender loving care for many, many years, and I am pleased to see that there is a chance that an improvement can be made in the area that will benefit the entire community, but particularly those people like Mr. Mammelani who drive by there on a regular basis. So thank you for the work that you and the developer have done to bring it to this point. Any other questions for the two gentlemen? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If so, please come forward to the podium. And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? Is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak in opposition? And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition? Thank you. Are there any council members who wish to speak? Hearing none, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaide?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mammelanti?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Excuse me, yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance pass is 820.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move into privilege of the floor, and we will invite members of the public to the podium to speak with respect to non-agenda items under privilege of the floor.
John Baines, 721 West 10th Street. I have something prepared tonight. Not usually the way I roll when I come in front of all of you, but I wanted to make sure everybody understood. Typically, I like to speak freestyle and go where it takes me. On this, I want to be sure I'm understood and saying exactly what I want to say, so I prepared this for your consideration. Almost exactly one year ago, myself and a small group of neighbors met in the backyard on a beautiful summer evening. We were very alarmed at the seeming rapid increase of total lawlessness in our neighborhood. We decided to put our heads together to figure out how to stand up and take our neighborhood back. We knew it wouldn't be easy. In our discussion, we came to the conclusion that much of the problem was the city's seeming total indifference to what was happening. We concluded that most of our city officials didn't live here in our neighborhood, and patrols were a rarity. How would they know? It was decided in a subsequent meeting in a basement that the only way to let the powers that be know was to tell them, to shine a light on the problems we saw every day so that they could better see them. On September 21st, 2021, several of us began that process before the council during privilege of the floor. We knew the council's role in city government, but we also knew it was an opportunity to be heard on a very public platform. I believe the council heard us. In the following weeks and months, I do believe many of the council agreed with us that things were spiraling out of control in many areas of our city. Time and again, it has been explained to our now-formalized group, the West End Neighborhood Watch, that change needs to start from the administration. So we have watched every move from the administration where law enforcement is concerned. To be fair, we have seen glimmers of hope through statements issued from the mayor's office. Glimmers, nothing more, no definitive action plan, nothing that says to the public, and more importantly, the lawbreakers, that the beginning of the end was coming for those terrorizing our neighborhoods, parks, and public spaces. Most of the statements and ideas from the mayor's office, if they did happen, would take years. There was no sense of urgency. There was no sense that they really saw anything wrong going on at all. In fact, the opposite happened on several occasions. It's explained that Mishawaka is safe, that the offenders weren't from Mishawaka. I fail to see why that matters. The mayor even touted a small drop in overall crime in his state of the city. Total denial still seems to be pervasive in the administration. They have horse blinders on, and all the administration can see is the next building project, the next big opportunity to slap together more bricks and burn through more mortar. With building projects, the opportunity to acquire more property to build the next big thing, the administration can move very fast and excitedly get before the press to announce it and talk about it. You all likely have an instance in your head of that very thing as I speak. The old Dodge property, the Cam's Island Apartments, may come to mind, but there are many smaller ones over the last year as well. The justification was that they were an eyesore, a source of constant problems, and frankly, that they needed to strike while the iron was hot. When it comes to the Riverwalk area, every effort is made to keep developing that as much as possible. The administration's con collective heads are put together and a plan is spit out with blazing speed. Our group predicted, and I said before the council, that if crime isn't addressed in the near downtown areas, people would begin to be afraid to utilize these expensive facilities because that crime wouldn't be contained to just the neighborhoods around those parks and public spaces. That has begun to be proven true due to the administration's lack of urgency and, I believe, sincerity. To address crime in the near downtown areas, people are starting to stay away. Say what you will about social media, but it's stated over and over again that people won't take their kids to the river, to the parks anymore. Mary Gibbard, Central, Batel, the Riverwalk, Merrifield Pool have all had increasing problems, very public, recently, in the years since our group first met in a backyard on a beautiful summer evening. On another very beautiful, recent beautiful evening, a promising young woman, a St. Joe County Officer, Reema Harris, was gunned down in what is best described as an anomaly in a statement by the Mishawaka Police Department. Two days later, another anomaly happened on 8th Street, thankfully not as extreme. The mayor's office has been silent. The fact that the mayor's office haven't issued public condolences to this woman's family is deafening in its silence. It screams to me what I have suspected for quite some time, denial, and when you can't, keep the trap shut. I suspect the mayor's office attempts to keep as much crime as possible out of the public eye because it's bad for business. My rational side understands that motivation very well. It is bad for business. Crime is horrible for business. We only have to look to our west to see that. My irrational side is where I live, quite literally. I live amongst those who are causing our increase in crimes. I see it, I hear about it. I've had the guns fired outside my very home and had the pleasure of seeing the orange circles in my driveway where the casings finally stopped spinning. Coupling the rational, irrational, and hearing from my neighbors about their fears and concerns, I can only conclude that business will suffer. The administration's business of building bigger, better things will suffer. That which has already been built will suffer. Much more importantly, the people will suffer. Their suffering has been ignored and unfortunately even derided by the mayor's office. Yes, I have ears to hear, and I've heard the whispers. It's really not a secret. A group that pledged to help has in fact become the scorn of the administration. Again, my rational side understands why. To shine a light on crime is bad for business. Shining that light, I consider my business, and business is good. I wish I couldn't say that, but it's true. I know many in our group, pardon me, many in our group don't want to take this on every single day, but we do. Barely a day goes by that we don't have an opportunity to shine that light. I hope the day comes, I can put that spotlight away and close up shop. In an effort to bring that day closer, I am once again calling on the mayor's office to use that sense of urgency. They clearly can muster when they want, for the purpose of protecting our people and the people's investments, our homes, our parks, and public spaces. I'm not just calling on the mayor's office, though, I'm calling on the council. I would like to see a joint resolution or signed public statement from the members of the council demanding a plan be developed and ultimately put in place by the administration to address crime in our most at-risk neighborhoods. What leverage the council decides to use to make that happen, if any, is up to them, but the council has a bully pulpit at their disposal, they may need to use it. I thank you all very much for the support you've shown over the last year. I look forward to continuing that for the betterment of every citizen in Mishawaka, as we all work together to stem the tide before it really is too late. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Baines?
Thank you, sir. You read my mind, I was going to ask you for that, John, thanks. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak under privilege of the floor? So please come forward.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, Honorable Board Members, Chief Witkowski, 200 North Church Street. Listening to that, I totally agree, we need to work together. We see it too, no one wants crime in their city, their neighborhoods, so I would like to have an open line of communication with these different Neighborhood Watch groups. They've worked in the past, we did that years ago, so it does work. We've proven that, you know, the neighborhood policing does work, that model does work. Here to really answer questions, we did acknowledge we had two homicides so far this year. The first one was in Pinoc on June 20th of this year. I found a young male party laying outside of one of the apartments out there on the sidewalk. He passed away. His last name was Derrickson. We are diligently working on that case. We've got top-notch detectives investigating that, and I can assure you, I can't share with you, but I can assure you that that will be solved. The next one was the Reema Harris down on Milburn, 1900 block of Milburn. Same thing with that, we can't talk a lot about that, but we have great information. People are coming forward, and there again, I know this will come to an end where we will make an arrest. We're not at that point yet, and I can't discuss it much further. Both these incidents were isolated, it wasn't random shootings. We just experienced that in Chicago, I'm sure you've seen the news. We are nothing like that. We had another one, I think in, I think it's 100 or 200 block of East 8th Street, soon after these first two. That was a domestic type of situation. There again, we have a suspect not in custody yet, but I believe there, I'm not sure if there's warrants out yet, but there will be soon. So that was contained to that particular family also. I did review, I've been hearing, talking about Shot Spotter and all that comparing it to South Bend. So we did poll our calls for service regarding shots fired, and I caution you on the number because what happens on that is every call that comes in counts as a call for service regarding that incident. So you could get one shots fired call, but you could have six calls, so that would register six incidents. So the total number is 263. We think it's probably closer to like the 219 number. Pretty evenly spread throughout the city. There was not, I guess the highest number was northwest, north being north of the river. So like I say, it's not one projected area, even though that number is quite less to neighboring agencies, that's still too much for us. So we are working diligently to lower that number. We're looking at new technology pieces. We're not looking at Shot Spotter at this time. I think it is a good tool, but it does not stop this type of violence. It helps you on the backend. So we've been putting money towards new camera systems throughout the city, leaving and entering the city. They've worked really well so far in solving crimes, not to this nature, but we're going to try and get additional cameras, and I think that's in the works right now. That would include to, there are cameras that we're looking at, it's more of a software piece, they don't record, but we could put them like at Central Park, we could put them in the school systems where the officer could pull it up in his car and see live feed. They say, "Don't record," but it's live feed. So that's part of what we're looking at to do moving forward. And plus, purchasing equipment to go along with active shooter situations and stuff like that, that make our officers more reactionary and give them the tools to be able to deal with that, so we don't end up with a situation like Texas. We've got great officers, I mean, I respect all of them. The men and women that work, they work hard, they work long hours, and, you know, I couldn't think of a better group to be chasing down these criminals for these heinous crimes and solving them. So any questions, I'm here to answer if anyone has anything.
Thank you, Chief. Before I throw it open to the others for questions, just a couple of comments. First and foremost, I think, thank you for your willingness to further the dialogue with all of our neighborhood groups, including Mr. Baines and his group as well. And I think I'm on solid ground to say that we as a council, as individuals, are happy to help facilitate that and be part of that conversation as well. So from both sides, if you keep us in the loop on that, we're happy to participate. The other thing I would say with regard to the technological issues that you touched on, we're right on the cusp of our budget meetings over the course of this summer, usually a little bit later in the summer, and what many members of the public would have no reason to know is that during the course of those budget meetings, we really go beyond dollars and cents in many respects, but for the purposes of this discussion, I think we as a council would love to hear specific proposals from the administration and the police department in particular with regard to what if any technological resources we need to address some of these concerns, what if any additional manpower we need to procure in order to address these concerns, what if any additional training we need to put our officers through to address these concerns, and anything that goes beyond any of those specifics. My recollection is that during the time that I've sat up here, and particularly with these folks, that any of those type of requests that have been suggested to us have been met with unanimous support. So as we can get into those conversations, perhaps it's time to revisit with a fresh set of eyes and really look at what do we need in order to do the best job we can as a community to address public safety. So we look forward to working with you on that as well. And with that, I will throw it open to questions and comments from the council with the proviso that, as the chief mentioned, any matters that are currently under investigation, we need to be sensitive to that ongoing investigation. But any questions for Chief Witkowski, Mr. Mammelanti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Chief, for coming this evening and giving a statement. I couldn't echo Mr. Hicksonbaugh's comments any better. And I appreciate your rapid response regarding, I sent that email regarding the Shot Spotter, and I thank you for your feedback and for your direction and information that you provided that that may not be the best solution for this particular situation. I do appreciate you looking into more current technology to help solve some issues and some crimes. I think that's outstanding, and I'd like to support that 100%. I'm not asking for a solution tonight, but I think as we open this dialogue, if we can also solve these issues, try our best to prevent them as well. I know that's the million-dollar question that every city's trying to have, but I think with your generous invitation to work with the Neighborhood Watch groups, I think we can put our heads together and try to come up with something.
I think collectively, we can. Like I say, I mean, it's a tough world out there right now. It's not the same as it was 10, 20 years ago, by no means. So it's a different atmosphere. It's more dangerous for my officers. Now they just changed the open carry law July 1st, so we're waiting to see. That's going to be interesting, how we deal with that. We recently had 4th of July festival on Saturday night. That went very well. We had a lot of police presence. We had our drone flying the whole night, and as, like I say, we didn't have any fights, we didn't have anything, so that went very well, but that could easily turn and go the other way too. So we're well, we're of that, and, but like I say, we had good participation from our guys and strategic plans on how we set up to actually secure that area.
Was that drone used for footage to, in case something did happen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We have two drones. We purchased in the last, it's probably been two years now, it seemed like a year. We have one fully licensed pilot. We have another one working to that degree. It's got night vision on it, it's got ultra, what do you say, ultra-red? What do you say? Infrared? Thermal camera. You can speak out of it, you can talk to crowds and stuff like that, so we're using that quite often.
Very, very cool. Look forward to our future discussions. Thank you to your officers for a great night on July 4th and for every other night.
It was very successful, we're pleased.
Thank you.
Mr. Benicki?
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, and thank all the Mishawaka Police Officers. I mean, they are absolutely world-class. It's not a job that I would want to go into at this time. I think that, looking at social media, you know, people are looking at, okay, we had some things recently, but then we've had in the past year or so, Barbie Creek had a couple fatalities, and there's just nothing been said about it, and people anticipate that it's unsolved-type crimes. That's not necessarily the case, is it?
We're waiting on state forensics to come back with information on the most recent two in December.
Okay.
And there again, we've got all the people involved, but we need forensic proof.
And does part of that go to the COVID as well? I mean, we've had COVID for two years, and it puts everything behind.
Right. I think we're in a COVID hangover since, ever since that started. It just, yeah, no matter where you look, they use the excuse, trying to buy supplies, trying to do things, that's what they use, so.
Sure.
Yeah, they're backlog.
Okay, and then, you know, how about like tapping into commercial or residential-type camera systems? I know South Bend's just starting to look into, you know, being able to do that. That's something that Mishawaka would be considering.
We had a discussion, well, like I say, again, probably two years ago, with Ring. We are able to get some of that footage, but the legal part of that, we need to check in, because we were working with a company that was going to do like a year free, and then there would be a cost after that, but he would capture businesses' video, Ring video, and then relay it to us as crimes happen. But that company didn't make it through COVID, and so, yeah, that's another avenue that's still out there.
And then the last thing is, I mean, it's the see something, say something, back to the heavenly goat. I mean, somebody saw something, all these people got shot, people just won't talk. I mean, how do you encourage them or force them to do anything of their own will?
Well, that's, yeah, that's a million-dollar question. You know, they lawyer up, you still have to get the truth, so working through the prosecutor's office, that's kind of the way to go.
Okay. And thank you again for all you do.
Sure, thank you.
Other questions for Chief Witkowski, Mr. Emmons?
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, for your participation this evening and enlightening us of what's going on and what you're doing and that, and I appreciate all your officers, what they do in protecting our community and that. And I've seen patrol cars in our area, out in the West End. I'd like to see a little bit more out there. Also, have we given up on the participation of bicycles that the police used to ride in the neighborhoods in that, in the summer?
I don't have.
That was always a deterrent.
Right. I like that, I love that program, but we don't have enough people right now. Not saying we'll never go back to that, but I just don't have the manpower to do that.
Okay. Because I mean, that was a good deterrent.
Yeah, I liked it, I liked it, yeah.
In communicating with the residents and that.
Right.
And talking with people and being on a kind of first-name And talking with people and being on a kind of first-name basis and everything. So I like that program and I just wondered whether that would be.
Years ago, I think we had 12 or 15 in that group, but I can't afford to do that right now.
Okay. Thank you, and again, thank you for all your help and continued help and like I say, we need to work together.
Yes, yes, sir.
And I know the council's willing to do that. Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Witkowski?
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak under the privilege of the floor? And so please come forward. Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak under the privilege of the floor?
Mr. President, I did not have questions, but I do have a comment if I could make on this subject. I think it's very important that Mr. Baines is here tonight. That's what we needed in Mishawaka, that's what's made Mishawaka great, I've said it before and I'll keep saying it. Don't be quiet, because when we do that, then it becomes, Mr. Benicki, the whole city becomes quiet. The heavenly goat was an incident, we don't operate like that. That was an incident with people from outside the community. We've built this police department and the safety of Mishawaka on what the neighborhoods want. All of us up here, doesn't matter how we feel, doesn't matter how the man sits across the office feels, it's how you guys feel. And if you feel unsafe, it's the police chief's, our responsibility and his responsibility to make you feel safe. And that's where we need to find a program that we can do it with. And I don't think, I don't think we're giving enough information out right now on things and I'm not saying specific incidents, but what programs can we do to make the community feel safe is what we need to do. I would entertain that the Public Safety and Health Committee meet with the police chief and the mayor and talk about what we can do if we can do that. I don't know if you could set that up?
We can, Mr. Compton chairs that committee, so we'd have to coordinate with him. And certainly there's a need for speed because there is a legitimate issue. I agree with you in your comments, Mr. Hazen, they're well taken. I do think that, again, we'll get into these issues and more during the budget hearings, but I certainly wouldn't have any objection to Mr. Compton working with the mayor and Chief Witkowski and whomever else to hold a meeting to follow up on the concerns that we're all aware of.
I agree with you on the budget, I mean, we can fund things, but I think we need to come up with a plan.
I agree.
I think we need to do it soon. Because it's not just your neighborhood, I'm hearing it out east, I'm hearing that people don't feel safe in Mishawaka. Is that legit? I don't know, but that's how they feel, so we need to answer that question. You're exactly right.
Thank you, Mr. Hazen, for those comments and I would echo them. I think that this is the opportunity for us to revisit some of the assumptions that we've had about what works and what doesn't. What we can do, what we can't and what we should do and what we ought to make a priority with regard to maintaining the quality of life that we all enjoy in Mishawaka. So I agree that whether it is through the work of the Public Health and Safety Committee, this council as a whole or any other group that can help generate the conversation that we need to have as a community about what we need to do differently or better, I am absolutely in favor of it. The other side of it is that as we work through this process, I think we always need to acknowledge that we have many strengths that are the envy of those around us near and far. The underlying point is that none of us, neither Mr. Baines, you, Chief Witkowski, anybody here, wants to see us lose those strengths and see them further eroded. And we want to make sure that we not only preserving where we're at and where we remember Mishawaka to be when we were kids, we want to move into the next century even further and have the confidence that our children are gonna feel the same about Mishawaka like we do. So I appreciate your comments and I look forward to working with you, the rest of the council, the administration and the community to address this topic. Mrs. DeMaid?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know that the neighborhood watch programs do work. The Twin Branch, who has been around for what, 30 some odd years, three decades? They do a great job and I am proud to be a part of the member, a member of the West End Neighborhood Watch Group, which started a year ago. This group has put the kibosh on several nuisance properties that are no longer a problem for the city. And so I would, I would encourage any neighborhood to get together and start their neighborhood watch programs. It does work and it is a great way to know your neighbors and to know those who don't belong in your neighborhood. So I encourage everyone to do that.
Thank you. I agree, Mrs. DeMaid.
Well said.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
All right. Then with that, we will move into unfinished business of which there is none, new business. As was, has been previously discussed publicly, we as a council need to make our appointment to the School City of Mishawaka Board of School Trustees to fill a vacancy on the school board. So at this time, the chair will entertain a motion to fill that vacancy. Mr. Mamalanti?
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I would like to make the motion that we as a council appoint Dave Weber to the School City of Mishawaka School Board.
I will second that motion.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to appoint Dave Weber as the council appointee to the School City of Mishawaka Board of School Trustees. Any additional questions or comments from the council?
Mr. Mamalanti?
I will wait till after the vote.
All right. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the appointment of Mr. Weber to the Board of School Trustees, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The record will reflect that Mr. Weber has been appointed unanimously by vote of the council to the Board of School Trustees for School City of Mishawaka. Congratulations to Mr. Weber. And then I will see if Mr. Mamalanti wants to share his comment now.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. First and foremost, I would like to publicly thank Ms. Amanda Roberts for her many years on the school board. I thought she represented not only the school corporation, the children, but as the council extremely well. She did a great job, in my opinion. I want to thank her publicly for her, for her time. I wanted to thank the other applicants that applied, as I stated, during the interview process. It's not an easy thing to do, to put your name out there. School City of Mishawaka, as we all know, is gonna have a tough couple of years ahead and a couple tough decisions to be, to be had, so thank you for your interest. I hope it's, if you didn't get appointed this time, please don't be discouraged for the next time. To Mr. Weber, thank you very much for your, your time and interest in this. Congratulations. I look forward to working with you as we did with Ms. Roberts on a, on a regular basis, keeping the communication lines open, having some roundtable discussions, how to benefit School City the best we can and vice versa. So congratulations and look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mamalanti.
Mr. Benicki?
Thank you. To echo Mr. Mamalanti's comments, I'd like to thank Amanda as well. It's not an easy job, I don't know that I would want to put myself out there, but, you know, with, with all the problems that we have to work our way through in the next few years, you know, she's done a great job. I'd also like to comment, you know, the 10 applicants that we had were all fantastic. It's a very, very tough decision and I would encourage each and every one of the ones that didn't make the, the appointment today to consider putting your name on a ballot. You know, there's, there's other ways to the school board besides just us. So we have such great applicants that I wish that, you know, we could appoint more, but we are very limited on what we can do. So thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benicki. Mrs. Volker?
I'm gonna take 30 seconds, 10 seconds even, we just had such a wonderful group of applicants and I just want to say thank you because any one of you would have been very qualified to serve on the school board. Thanks. And congratulations, Dave.
Thank you, Mrs. Volker. Other comments with regard to the school board appointment?
Then I also will add my thanks to all the applicants. I would agree that this is a strong group of applicants as I can remember us ever having as we sought to fill vacancies, even in the days when we had more vacancies to fill. But I also want to take a minute to thank my colleagues. I have always found that the council takes this responsibility seriously and this year's process validated that in my mind. There were good questions asked, people did their homework and took it seriously. There may those who, there may be those who disagree with the choices that we make, but hopefully no one will doubt that we take it seriously and we do the best possible job that we can to make sure that we have good people serve the interests of the community as our appointee to the school board. So thank you to each and every one of you for the work that you did to do our due diligence as we make this appointment. With that, is there any other new business to come before the council?
Mr. Emmons?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make note that the West End Neighborhood Meeting on July 21st, that's the third Thursday of the month, our featured guest will be the Honorable Mayor Wood, he'll be giving the State of the City address at that time. And at the last time he gave it, it was short, but really to the point and he guarantees that it won't be any longer than it was when he originally gave it to the council. So we look forward to having everybody there, spread the word and as usual, we'll have the West End donuts there. So look forward to seeing everybody there on the 21st and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Emmons. Mrs. DeMaid?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to make, make an announcement that West End Neighborhood Watch Meeting, there will be none this, this month. We will meet again at the National Night Out and I am unsure of the date, but, Mr. Mamalanti, do you know that date?
August 2nd.
August 2nd, thank you, Officer Faltsensky. So the National Night Out and we, more information on that will be forthcoming. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. DeMaid. Mr. Mamalanti?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too would like to make an announcement that we will, we will not have a meeting for the Twin Branch Neighborhood Watch Meeting this month. Our next time we will get together will be August 2nd, the National Night Out in August. I will, at our next meeting, provide details in terms of time, location, et cetera, once those get finalized. So no meeting this month. Thank you.
Thank you. Other new business?
Then before we wrap up, I would be remiss if I didn't recognize the presence of Dr. Theodore Stevens, the new superintendent of School City of Mishawaka. Dr. Stevens, somewhat officially, we welcome you to your new position. You've managed to last all the way from July 1st to July 5th, so keep up the good work. And again, welcome back to Mishawaka and please let us know what we can do to help you, the board and the entire school community.
Thank you.
And with that, if there is no other business to come before the council, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
I just like to, on behalf of myself in my life, I like to thank you for your support and confidence in me as a school board member and to the board members and superintendent. I'm looking forward to this different challenge in my life, on the other side of the classroom, so to speak. It's gonna be a great working relationship, but I'm looking forward to it. Being retired now has a lot of advantages to be able to do a lot more things, so I appreciate the opportunity that you gave me and looking forward to working with you. Be on the other side.
Thank you, Mr. Weber, and again, congratulations. Any other new business to come before the council? Hearing none, then a motion to adjourn would be in order. We are adjourned.